No, that's for the backup laptop. Does it have an ever on it? Yeah, that's for the back. For the one Lucian on.
I was trying to get them very.
Just arriving with this average over by use over the years. There's no document that says this is the county road, half of, half of the county road of Nash Road.
As of a few seconds ago, he wasn't.
The Harley rate, have you ever seen those? Oh my God. Just so nice. It's weird, one side of my property is full of rocks, so I'm just going in there and just conditioning and just pushing all the rocks.
Okay. So the regular meeting for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one will be called to session at six P M. Could we read the notice of temporary procedures, please?
The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. If participating on Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. At this time, state your first name, last name, and county you reside in for the record.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Julio Rodriguez, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
We can let the record show that all commissioners are present and in, in chambers today. Thank you.
Thank you. Department announcements?
I have a couple, and first off is just an acknowledgement in your agenda packet that while we were able to update the cover page and the agenda with your names and your districts that you represent, one of our transmittal pages that goes with each of the staff reports still has a carryover from the last administration. So we're working with the software provider to have a cleaner packet for you next time. Following that, I'd like to introduce several new staff that are coming to the RMA Planning Division. We have a new Assistant Director, Robert, Robin Bolster Grant, who can speak in just a moment, introduce herself. But we've also started Dana Serpa Ostoha, who started with us last Monday, or this Monday. Yeah, day before yesterday, and she's, she's worked with us before. And we're also very honored to have yet another planner starting with us on Monday, and her name is Homanje Mutta. But with that, I'd like to introduce Robin Bolster Grant, if she'd like, or Benny Young, if he'd like to introduce his hire.
Well, thank you, Tav, and I appreciate it very much, and Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Benny Old, I used to be Benny Young. But I'm the Director of the Resource Management Agency for San Benito County. And it's my pleasure this evening to introduce a new Assistant Director for Planning and Building Services. Her name is Robin Bolster Grant, she's here in the first row, and we'll give her an opportunity to say something to you. We're really pleased to have her join the team at the Resource Management Agency. She's got about twenty years of public service experience under her belt, along with master's degree in urban planning from San Jose State and a law degree as well. So we're just so pleased that she's decided to join the team here. And I think she can tell you for herself how much she values public service. But I think she's going to be a great addition to the team at the Resource Management Agency. And, and so I'd like to give Robin a chance to just say a few words with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, it's great to be here. My experience, as Benny told you, about twenty years, Santa Cruz County is where I have been a planner in, in covering everything from, from projects to environmental resources to code compliance. And then the last year and a half, I was designated the Cannabis Licensing Manager. So anybody that has questions about cannabis or anything else, I want you to think of me as a resource and, and come to me with any questions that you have. I did elect along the way, while I was working for Santa Cruz County, to get my law degree down the road at Monterey College of Law, a great program, which I can also talk to anybody who wants to hear about that. Was in private practice for the last couple of years, helping folks navigate the land use regulations in Santa Cruz County, and I loved it, I enjoy the law. But I missed this, I missed the collaboration, chewing on policies, trying to fix things that don't work right for our constituents, and making sure that the goals of our community are carried out through our actions. And in that, you folks have a very important charge, and I'm sure that you've come to realize that, those of you who are new to this, but the Planning Commission has, has the, the weight of, of carrying forth the, the goals of, of your community. And so I know that you will be great at that. And again, please contact me, I will let everybody know how to get in touch with me. But call me, write me, text me if you have questions, I'd, I'd love to be a resource for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and, and welcome to the county.
And with that, the next item is Ariel Goodspeed is just going to give us a little update on the American Planning Association memberships and your engagement with that organization.
Hi, Commissioners, you are now all officially registered with your APA account, so please enjoy. And the three commissioners who were available to attend twenty twenty-one APA conference in May are now registered as of today. So exciting. Let me know if you need anything else.
Thank you. Public comment, is there any public comment at this time?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, there is one hand raised. Valerie Egland, I am allowing you to talk, please state your first and last name and the county you reside in.
Thank you, I'll, I just unmuted myself. Awesome, it's, it's great to look at the Planning Commission from this perspective. I'm pleasantly surprised, but I kind of feel like a voyeur, looking in at the screen at everybody. Congratulations to new staff, we need new staff. Let's be good to new staff. Thank you, and pleasant evening.
Thank you, Valerie. Any additional public comment?
No additional public comment at this time.
Consent agenda, acknowledgement of certificate of posting and adoption of the action minutes of February twenty twenty-one. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? It's the pleasure of the commission.
I'll make a motion, have a move forward, with the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none. The regular agenda, item number six. Review and report on proposed vacation of the south half of Nash Road between Monterey and West Streets for conformance with the twenty thirty-five San Benito County General Plan.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Joel Ellenwood, Assistant County Counsel. And I've been working with RMA staff on both the transfer of the park property, which we reviewed with you at last meeting. And then in the process of preparing for the public hearing on this street vacation that will be before the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday, we realized that our resolution that was adopted last meeting here, reviewing conformance with the general plan of the transfer of the property, did not include the vacation of the road. And the Streets and Highways Code also refers to the, a planning law that requires a conformance review by the Planning Commission of street vacations. So we prepared the resolution that, that includes that action before you tonight. And respectfully request you rely upon your recollection of the presentation from last meeting. If you have any questions about how what you heard then relates to this action, please, please let us know, and, and we'll be happy to respond.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion on the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner, comments or questions?
I just want the record to, to show that there are some concerns. Public, has, people from the public have reached out about traffic, specifically the stop signs. And so I just want the record to show that those concerns are being, that I did hear those, and I'm letting the commission know.
If I may, Chair?
Yes.
I believe that what Commissioner Rodriguez is referring to are, is that the intersection of River Parkway and San Benito Street, there's a T-intersection there that has no traffic controls on San Benito Street. And have, once having that concern brought to our attention, the RMA department is in the process of installing a three-way stop at that location. So it'll be similar to the Nash Road and River Parkway where there is a three-way controlled intersection. And that's going to be a cooperative effort between the county and the city, with the county preparing the, the stop signs and the, the warrants that are required for traffic controls in, to be installed. And the city is joining that effort by helping out with doing the street striping with the limit lines and a crosswalk at that location. Director Young, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Rodriguez. And you may be referring to, there's also some public concern with the possible vacation of Nash. So tonight, the, the Nash Road is half owned by the city, half owned by the county. So you're, all you're doing tonight is making a conformance determination that the project in totality to include this is conforms to our general plan. You're not making a finding on the, the vacation of Nash necessarily. That will go, we are presenting that possibility to the board next week, and so your conformity determination doesn't necessarily mean that the Planning Commission supports that particular action. And just so the commission will know, I am hopeful that the school district and the city will be able to resolve the issues that largely related, that were articulated in a city council meeting earlier this week, that largely related to making certain that when that's done, there's adequate public safety access preserved, and I believe that is possible.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yes. I have one, the stop sign that you're going to install at the San Benito Street extension by the high school where River Parkway comes in, isn't that going to stop the flow of traffic, wasn't that the design of that, to keep that traffic flowing through there, and not to put stop signs?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and Mr. Scagliotti, that's a very good question. And let me say this, it's an interim control mechanism, and one of the reasons we're going ahead and doing it at this time is that the city's mayor indicated that he felt, as part of the traffic control for the area, that we ought to have a controlled intersection at that location. That's not our long-term plan to retain that three-way stop indefinitely. The county is planning to do a major project on San Benito Street, starting at that location, and we would put in either signalized control or even a roundabout, which I happen to personally prefer, at that location in the longer term. It's going to be about a year, maybe two, before we can get that installed, and then we would put, we would pave San Benito Street all the way on down to Union to include accommodations for pedestrians and bicycles. So please consider it as just an interim, and we're doing it, even though it will stop people, it will operate more safely in the interim until we can do the longer-term traffic, signal control at that location.
Yeah, but also, if you do that, because I live in the Siena area right there, the people, and they start back to high school, are going to find other alternate routes, and they should be using that, and they'll be coming down other streets they don't belong on.
Correct. But I, I think that issue can also be resolved through the continuing discussions about the closure.
Okay.
That's, I'm optimistic about that.
Yeah, you're very optimistic.
Valid question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pack?
So I have questions in regards to kind of compliance with Policy ED one point five, the Quality of Life Improvements. I have two questions. First of all, in considering this, what has been the traffic impact analysis as far as the results of rerouting traffic, you know, if this vacation goes through? And secondly, what has been the consultation and communication so far with emergency services, Hollister Police Department, as regards to effects on, you know, response times to the affected neighborhoods?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair, with your permission.
Absolutely.
First of all, bear in mind, you're not making a finding on, on the, the public safety aspects of this tonight. Just including that possible action in your conformance determination. However, the question has validity, and I would say that that's going to be a continued discussion primarily between the school district and the city, as opposed to the county. What the county, the county's obligation under an agreement that was made in twenty sixteen, five years ago, was that the county would build River Parkway south of the high school from Nash down to connect to the intersection we were just discussing where the three-way stop will go. And the county did that at an expense of about one point nine million dollars. And in return for that, the school district is obligated to convey the land south of, of River Parkway to the county for the development of the regional park, as we discussed at your last meeting. And we need possession of that land in order to move forward with a major grant application that we think we have a very good chance for. And so the county's obligations are being fulfilled by that construction and by this possible vacation of the thirty feet on the south side of Nash. But with regard to the public safety issues, as I indicated to Commissioner Scagliotti, with regard to the interim three-way stop, I still think in the longer term, that will be resolved, and that there's a way to preserve access for public safety along Nash. And I'm, I think that I am optimistic that will get worked out through further discussion involving the public safety authorities here. I wasn't here in twenty sixteen when the decision was made to do what we're talking about by the three parties, the city and the the school district and the county. And so it's time to reengage that issue, and I believe it will be resolved.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Julio Rodriguez?
I just wanted to reiterate what Scagliotti said. So on record, you're saying the three-way stop, that is a temporary, that's not a long-term solution, correct?
Correct.
About two years out.
Right.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Is there a motion on the table?
All second?
We need, we need somebody to make a motion first. Okay, there's a, a motion to adopt the resolution, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pack seconds, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None, motion carries five zero, thank you. Item number seven.
Very much.
Item number seven, Planning Commission Training, the Open Public Meeting Act and Public Hearing Due Process Fair Hearing Procedures.
Good evening, Commissioners, Joel Ellenwood, Assistant County Counsel again. And tonight, we're going to present an introduction to you of the Ralph M. Brown Act as it relates to planning commissioners. And Mr. Nolasco shared with me a presentation that was given to the Board of Supervisors a couple of years ago by another attorney, and that was a hundred and six slides. And I, I'm not going to inflict that, that level of pain on you this evening.
Thank you.
And so this is a, a brief introduction. But it's important to note that the rudiments of the Brown Act were, go back to the early nineteen fifties with a statement of principles that remain in the, in the statutes. Again, that public commissions are to aid in the conduct of the people's business, and it is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly, and that their deliver, deliberations be conducted openly. That's why it's also referred to as the Open Public Meetings Act. The people of the state don't yield their sovereignty to agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments that they have created. It's been said that the Brown Act could be summarized in one sentence, that the people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of people's business, and therefore meetings of public, public bodies, and we'll go through a definition of what that means, and the writings of public officials and agencies shall be open to public scrutiny. Essentially, when you assume a, a role as a public servant, you are obligating yourself to, to be part of a public trust, and to put the interest of the, the public and the community as a whole above your individual interests or concerns. But the Brown Act's goals, believe it or not, are to get business done smoothly because it establishes standard procedures that everyone can rely upon. Sometimes there, there may be arguments or disagreements about how that's done, but that's the objective. And is to underwrite the public's right to participate meaningfully in meetings and timely review documents and with decision-making. And you'll, you, you've seen that in the process that has been implemented in the first two meetings in which the new commissioners have participated in. And you'll be accustomed to going forward in the future. The, the Brown Act also has provisions that allow, allow for confidential discussions with legal counsel or real property negotiators and, and other matters. But that's a very limited exception, and it is very rare that it applies to planning commission meetings. It's much more frequently involved in legislative bodies at a higher level, either city councils or boards of supervisors. But there are instances where it may be appropriate for the Planning Commission to consult with its legal counsel. its legal counsel, myself or my successor, someone else in that role, in confidence, so that you can receive, uh, privileged attorney-client, uh, advice and counsel, uh, about matters that would otherwise compromise the interests of the county, were, if they were discussed So, uh, of course, the press, the, uh, the newspapers and media coverage now, of course, primarily through the internet like Benito Lincoln and Facebook and so on, um, have the right to fully understand and communicate, uh, regarding public agency decision-making and business. So, uh, we're doing the people's business. Who cares about Brown Act compliance? You'll find out. A lot of people care about it. The news media, the public and voters, the state legislature that's, that established the Brown Act and, uh, from time to time amends it, uh, as appropriate, and, uh, public officials need to know that a violation of the Brown Act may result in the invalidation of agency decisions or actions. If you don't comply with the Brown Act, uh, the, whatever decision you make can be reversed by the court until you do come into compliance with the Brown Act. And that has delays and litigation costs and potential attorney fee awards, uh, substantial impacts as far as the business of the county is concerned. But from an individual point of view, uh, violation may carry civil or criminal penalties as well, and we'll spell that out. But under general, under general principles, we're talking about an aspect of public ethics here, and the law establishes what the minimum standards are. But what we're trying to do is gain and maintain the public trust in an open and responsive, uh, government, uh, to do the people's business. And that requires frequently more, uh, doing what we ought to do to avoid the appearance of impropriety, even if it's technically legal. And, uh, we suggest that, that you, in doing this, you ask yourself, how would it look to open the newspaper or to see a social media post the next day criticizing you for, uh, some action that you took, um, which may be technically legal but, um, uh, is subject to public criticism? Now, you know, accepting public criticism goes with the job. We deal with controversial issues, and people have strong feelings about them, and they have a right to express them, including in meetings. So, um, that's, uh, something that perhaps you need to prepare yourself for and recognizing that it just goes with the job. So, again, I under, I emphasize the words of that one sentence. One word was meetings. So what is a meeting under the Brown Act? A meeting is any gathering of a majority of the members of the commission at the same time and location, including by telephone, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item within its jurisdiction. So, um, meetings are not just these agenda, uh, agendized meetings, uh, once or twice a month. They are anytime, uh, three or more of you gather and talk about issues that come bef, either do come before or could come before the planning commission. So you need to avoid, uh, doing that. That means, that includes serial meetings. You know, the old, uh, game of telephone tree where one person talks to another person who talks to another person and so on, a telephone tree amongst yourselves, and, and you communicate the thoughts or desires or intentions of, um, other members of the commission so that you form a, uh, a decision or consensus about something. That is prohibited under the Brown Act. Individually, you could talk to one other member of the planning commission about a topic, but if you talk to two, that's a majority of, of the board, and that's prohibited under the Brown Act. That, what that means is, if you're going to do the public's business, you need to do it in public according to an agenda, at a meeting at which the public has a right to, to attend and, and listen and comment about. That's what the Brown Act requires. I don't know where, what happened to my slides? There's another type of, there's another type of, uh, uh, communication which is referred to as a hub-and-spoke kind of thing, where one person, and I'm, I'm not, I'm going to pick on the chair at this point, uh, one person on the commission reaches out to other members, uh, as the hub, so to speak, and gathers information about the, the intentions or decisions or, uh, goals or problems related to, uh, an item of planning commission business. That's also prohibited. Does that mean that you can't get together and, you know, uh, it's for some social occasion or some ceremonial, uh, opportunity, or at a, uh, conference of the American Planning Association California chapter, which I'm a longtime member of, and I highly encourage you to participate fully in that opportunity as an aside? No, it's okay to do those things as long as you scrupulously avoid talking about planning commission business. So it's all right to do those. But the Brown Act would apply to standing committees, which would be a committee of less than a majority of the commission who have a, a long-term, regular meeting agenda on a ongoing topic, uh, subject. That would be considered as, uh, standing committee. Uh, an ad hoc committee, uh, that wouldn't be subject to the Brown Act is for short-term, for a limited, uh, period of time on a transitory issue, something that comes up, uh, you're going to, uh, prepare some policy options for the, for the commission as a whole to consider, uh, meet with staff, meet with, uh, interested folks in the community, and then make a presentation to the, or assist staff in making a presentation to the full commission to actually make the decision. That's an ad hoc committee. Meetings come in four flavors. There's regular meetings, uh, which, as a body, you set what the regular meetings' schedule is for the planning commission for a year, for the year. Special meetings can be called, and, uh, a regular meeting requires, uh, the posting of the agenda on at least 72 hours ahead of the meeting. And then there are special meetings, which can be called by a, by the chair or a majority of commissioners with at least 24 hours' notice to other members and the media and anyone else who's requested to have notice of planning commission, uh, business. And that, um, a special meeting is limited to the particular business that is, uh, the, the reason of which the special meeting has been called and not any other business, um, that is not part of the purpose of calling that special meeting. There are possibilities of emergency meetings or an emergency being added, a, a discussion item being added to the agenda. There are special rules that apply to that. It very seldom, uh, occurs in the planning commission context because we're talking about, you know, natural disasters or, um, uh, events that require an immediate response that, uh, you can't give 72 or 24 hours' notice, but, uh, urgent action needs to be taken. And then there are, uh, the last type of meeting are adjourned meetings, which is when you have a regular or a special meeting and you run out of time or energy. It gets to be 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and you say, "Uh, I can't take this anymore. Let's adjourn this meeting to a specific time and, and place, uh, within the next five days to, to try and finish up on this topic, on the agenda." That would be an adjourned meeting. So what do records mean in the context of the Brown Act? They would be agendas, staff reports, correspondence, uh, emails, letters, texts, uh, that you either receive from the public or from staff or exchanged between yourselves. All of those, um, are records that, um, fall under both the Brown Act and a, a much broader law, which is referred to as the Public Records Act, and we're not going to deal with that. That's a whole nother night's presentation. But, um, uh, that would also include maps, plans, data that are accompanying any, uh, agenda item that might be listed. So, but you, you do need to be, uh, mindful of the fact that, uh, emails that you exchange, uh, either with the public or with each other or with staff are public records, and they're, uh, so I strongly encourage you to, to conduct any email correspondence, um, using your official email accounts. Part of the reason for that is, uh, again, because that kind of communication or public records, if you're using your personal phone or computer, uh, or email account, and someone makes a Public Records Act request, they can subpoena your phone and search all of it, your personal phone, to, uh, to find those emails. And, um, I, I strongly encourage you to avoid that possibility by using your official So what's on the agenda? The agenda is something that's going to be prepared by staff, and they may confer with the, the chair about what items should be included in the agenda. But it, each item on the agenda should have a brief description of the item to be discussed, sufficient to inform the public about the nature of the, the item that's under consideration and what the potential consequences would be. And, um, on the agenda is, uh, you'll notice on every agenda, there is a, um, opportunity for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So the public can come to you on items that are within the purview of the planning commission. In other words, land use or environmental or general planning issues and, uh, and make a public comment. Now, the chair has the discretion to say, uh, you know, a campaign statement or, you know, some, uh, concern that doesn't have to pertain to those topics to, uh, to cut off that kind of, uh, public comment, but, uh, again, it's limited to three minutes, so, uh, sometimes it's the better discretion is the better part of valor and let someone use up their three minutes rather than, uh, you know, have the, the perception that you're censoring someone or cutting them off from, uh, public presentation. And then each item on which the, the commission is to take action, there's a separate opportunity for the public to comment on that particular item, uh, before you take action, so that you hear from the public, uh, about what their opinions, their concerns are, and can take that into account in your decision-making. Again, the staff is responsible for making sure the agenda both, uh, is, is available in an ADA compliant, Americans for Disabilities Act compliant, so, uh, with text readers or various technologies, um, to make it available for people with disabilities to, to review that information. And that includes how it's presented on the internet. I mentioned before about closed sessions. If there is to be a closed session, it has to be on the agenda, and it has to fall with, in one of the narrow exceptions that allows for closed sessions to be conducted. And, again, it's very rare that that would occur at the planning commission, uh, level, but if it were to occur, it would have to be on the agenda. So we, we couldn't have a situation where, in the course of a meeting, someone threatens litigation, and you need to receive, uh, legal advice about whether or not that's credible and that's part of your, uh, concern. It would not be appropriate for me as, as your attorney to advise you in the course of that public meeting, and so, in that si- situation, I would recommend continuing the matter until it can be agendized for a closed session discussion to resp, to give you proper legal advice about that, uh, so that we could respond. Again, it's, uh, it can be cumbersome bec, to comply with these, uh, requirements, but it's part of what the legislature has decided is necessary in order to make, uh, the, the public have trust and confidence in the decision-making process. And even if it's on the agenda and we have a closed session discussion, if some action is taken in relation to what's been, uh, considered in closed session, I have to report out what, uh, the results of that closed session were. And if it's merely a discussion of legal risks and, and alternatives, uh, you know, the report out would be as vague as no action was taken, but, um, but that's part of the requirement dealing with closed session. So, uh, the whole purpose of, of the Brown Act is to facilitate public participation. That means having the agenda posted, uh, at least 72 hours prior to the meeting, again with a brief description of the items on the agenda, including those for closed session. And staff takes care of, of that responsibility, but at the beginning of each meeting, uh, you have what sounds like a, you know, kind of a, almost a rote recitation, but you're, you're affirming that the agenda has indeed been posted, uh, at least 72 hours in advance. There's a, a display box outside the, uh, administration building here. That's where the agendas are posted. They're also available at the, uh, RMA, uh, office, and they're posted on the internet through the Nova's Agenda and also the county website. So, again, we're, we, we do the people's business in the open to let them know what's happening. You'll frequently hear people say, "Well, I didn't know that this, uh, subject was going to come up. I didn't get any notice." Well, you can rest assured that we've complied with the, the requirements of putting those items on the, on the agenda. Citizenship requires work too. You have to pay attention. And, uh, and so, people are concerned about it, uh, knowing in advance. They can have themselves put on a list to actually get the agenda sent to them, either by email or by regular mail, uh, in advance. So if they're really concerned about wanting to know, they can ask to have, to request to have the agenda sent to them, either regarding certain topics or a certain location or just all of the agendas. So that's, that's a responsibility that staff has as well, to keep track of those lists of people who want to know things about, who want to have copies of the agenda. And again, action can only be taken on items that are listed on the agenda. If something comes up that's not on the agenda, either during open public comment either during open public comment or whatever, the board can't, the commission can't do anything about it other than schedule it for a future meeting, at which action could be taken. And, again, there's an opportunity for public comment on each action item on the agenda. What are the remedies for violations? I alluded to it before. Number one would be, the action would be invalidated. If you don't comply with the Brown Act, it didn't happen. However, before filing a court action to invalidate something for noncompliance with the Brown Act, a potential plaintiff has the obligation to notify the county and give them the opportunity to cure that violation, which means you might have to essentially do it over again. If the first time you went around, there was an actual or technical violation, or even sometimes just the allegation that there is a violation without necessarily agreeing, you could do it again, just to make sure that that person can't get into a courtroom and get an order invalidating that action and be able to claim the right to attorney fees. Again, there are the potential of civil actions to prevent future violations. So if someone went to court and said, "Gee, that San Benito County just continually ignores their requirements under the Brown Act," and they can cite chapter and verse of multiple times in which that's occurred and established, that's a pattern in practice of the county to avoid or evade the Brown Act, we can get a court order ordering the county to comply, and usually in a, in very specific direction, directive ways. And they would be entitled to obtain attorney fee award for bringing such an action if it was successful. But, again, there's a potential for criminal complaints that would attach to each member in attendance, excuse the typo there, in attendance at a meeting where action is taken in violation of the act with intent to deprive the public of information to which the member knows or has reason to know. The public is entitled. In law school, they call that c-enter. You have to have specific intent, knowledge and intent to violate the act. But that can be proved by circumstantial evidence, not because, again, a matter of intent is, you know, unless you actually say, "I don't care what the Brown Act says. We're going to do that and so." You know, that would be a clear expression of intent that would establish your potential liability. That's a misdemeanor. You think, "Well, a misdemeanor, it's like a traffic ticket." Well, a traffic ticket for which you could serve up to six months in jail and pay a, and/or pay a fine of up to $1,000. But more than having a criminal violation on your record, even if it's attempted to minimize as saying it's only a misdemeanor, what's the public perception? And, again, we go back to that issue. What does the law require, and what is the ethical standard that should apply to maintaining the public trust? So the key lessons to take from the Brown Act in general is that the law sets minimum standards for ethical behavior. Violations of ethics and open government laws can carry stiff penalties. But the biggest penalty is an erosion of the public trust in the, that the government puts the people's business first and not backdoor deals or things that are decided behind closed doors. So if you have a question about whether or not, what the Brown Act requires, by all means, ask, and ask early in the process. Staff will guide you. You happen to have an attorney who's the Assistant Director of Planning and Building, who has experience in this area, long experience both as a planner and as a lawyer. And, of course, county council stands ready to assist and respond to questions as well. So thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Does this satisfy our ethics training that we're required?
No, it does not.
No.
No, you're still required under Assembly Bill 1, 2, 3, 4, not even sure what the specific code requirement of that is, but it's in the government code, to have a two-hour training in ethics. And that has to be through either one of the certified providers through the Institute for Local Government or the Attorney General's Office. And unfortunately, you can't claim any credit for enduring the pain that I've inflicted on you this evening.
Okay. Will we be signed up for that in the next couple of months? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are online courses available, and I would encourage you to, you know, set aside a couple hours on a weekend and go through that. And you have to provide the certificate of completion to staff so that we keep a record of your compliance with that requirement. And it's required for you to undertake that every two years. And that applies to my, to me as well, and to senior county staff also. So we share your pain. But it's always a good reminder and keep the rules refreshed in foremost.
Okay, thank you. And thank the CAO's office for getting us that training. Whenever you have the time, we appreciate it.
So lastly, we'll send you a copy of the presentation tonight. And there's a wonderful guide prepared by the League of California Cities to the Ralph M. Brown Act. And the last slide of this presentation includes the link to that. It's about 60 pages. It's written, there are a lot of illustrations, both in terms of examples and in photos and graphics, so it's not as dry perhaps as the presentation I've made tonight. It gives you kind of some hypotheticals, some examples of bad actors and the consequences related to that. I'd highly encourage you to check that out. And the other thing is that the Brown Act is all, you know, codified in California statutes, and the link to that is also on the last side of the presentation. So thank you again for your patience and attention.
Thank you. Is there any other commissary comment or questions? Seeing then, is there any public comment? There you go.
There's no public comment at this time.
Wonderful. Item number eight. Consider establishing an ad hoc committee with two planning commissioners as part of the scoping work to support the planning and development of a countywide habitat conservation plan and natural community conservation plan known as the San Benito County Conservation Plan.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. So the county has officially applied for a federal grant for a habitat conservation plan and natural community conservation plan, and we're going to be calling it the San Benito County Conservation Plan. So it's for about $1.3 million. We will find out in June if we were awarded the grant. But we really believe that open and frequent communication is really key and vital to having a successful plan and getting broad community support for the plan. So in this effort, we're hoping that the Planning Commission considers forming, you know, appointing two planning commissioners and forming an ad hoc committee to work on scoping and community outreach and really being there for the public. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I just have a question. Are there going to be two members of the board on this as well? Or is it just staff and?
So at this time, we were considering staff and two planning commissioners, and then also opening it up for, you know, the public, who would want to join from the public.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, we will be conferring with our administrative staff and maybe soundboarding off the board on how they want to formulate this. But also, as we just refreshed earlier, ad hoc committee name actually might not be reflective of the commitment that we're asking of today, which is a single item, a study, a study, and maybe a presentation. This might be more on the level of staying involved with the process over time as we involve multiple parties and the plan takes shape. And so it, right now, we need ad hoc and some volunteers, but it likely may morph as we decide administratively and as a county, what kind of, for lack of a better word, technical advisory committee and information conduits that we want to create. We just wanted to assure that staff wasn't ahead of our representatives and our appointed members.
So similar to the inclusionary housing committee that we had, it was called ad hoc, but it morphed into a standing committee, and we had to notice it and all of that good legal stuff. Okay. Is there any public comment on this particular item?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the commission? Is there any interest in, from the commissioners in participating on this ad hoc or standing committee?
I'm certainly willing to serve.
Any other commissioners willing to serve? Okay.
Sold to the two commissioners.
Okay. Well, okay. Well, it's the, it falls upon the chair to select the members, and I will take one slot as the senior member of the commission, and I'll select Commissioner Julio Rodriguez as the second member.
I was actually going to, if it's okay with you, recommend Devin, just because of his background in land use law.
Okay. Then the second member of the committee will be Commissioner Pak. Thank you both. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item would be commissioner comments. Are there any comments, questions, or other items? Yes, Commissioner Scagliotti.
Yes, I have a question. The other, the last three meetings we've had, I've had to come down to the county office to get my agenda. Is it possible to have it mailed to me by the Thursday before the meeting so I can go over everything that's in the packet? If I have to come down on the Monday before the meeting, it doesn't do me any good. I don't have time to go over it.
Well, we hope to improve on that and get it into your hands earlier. That's true. And your five computers have not quite come in yet. And what we're hoping to do is actually electronic distribution. So the email correspondence and your county business, we hope that can be done on a county platform. But we're still able to produce hard copies. In the past, we've actually driven these to people's addresses sometimes, but there's a, there's a way to, we're generally producing on Thursday. And so to actually do a California overnight or other distribution may be a little difficult. But if you share your needs with us, we'll do our best to get it in your hands, a hard copy. I know Commissioner Gibson just mentioned recently that he preferred hard copy and also to have it available for the other commissioners, and we brought that to the administration building. We're kind of, you know, we went into COVID, and we're also learning how to walk with it, and also with new commissioners, what your preferences are. So thank you for that.
Well, there are four of us that have paper copies up here, so I think we'd all appreciate, at least four of us would appreciate having paper copies. And if it's possible to get them either mailed is a preference for some commissioners or picked up at the admin on the Thursday before the meeting just to give us additional time to review. Sometimes the packets are a little thicker than this, and it requires some footwork perhaps, or meeting with applicants or neighbors of various applications. So it's, if possible, if we could get those at a minimum, what are in our rules, which would be the Thursday before.
Just to let you know, a general practice in planning realms is to assure that you, as commissioners, have the packets before they're made broadly available to the rest of the public. And, you know, an individual proponent may know exactly the contents, but we try to get them in your hands first so that when the phone rings, you've already, from the public, asking a question, that you've already had an opportunity to look at.
Okay. Well, I'd appreciate if staff could work with Commissioner Scagliotti to meet his needs. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions, suggestions from the commissioners? Fantastic. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Five-zero. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.